Everybody's back, okay. Let's get the show rolling. And we are at three. We convene open session then call for people here who are waiting for us. We're calling, three women calling to order an open session, remove, reconvene, open session at five fifty-six, sorry. At five fifty-six P M. By law, board policy, I must notify you that this meeting is being recorded. Longboard policy, any member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda or on any non-agenda item, but the public must present written requests to the board. Therefore, I ask you to timely submit your speaker slips at this time to help us run and envision the meeting. Speakers lists for non-agenda items need be turned in prior to four point two hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. You'll be recognized, call the podium at that time, both thirty minutes to address the governing board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip may be turned in by item five point nine hearing of public regarding agenda items. You'll be recognized, call the podium when your proposed agenda item comes up. So all thirty minutes to address the governing board. Three point two, fourth act is taken in closed session, governing board met in closed session, engagement is taken. Three point three, pledge of allegiance and welcome, now welcome Dr. McLeod, welcome Colonel Ocean Air School to introduce students, which is where Air School will be listed in the book. Thank you, Ocean Air and students, that was wonderful. And you'll move there, please, at end of session. We are off to new. Right, three point four, again, go over some of them. Three point four, approve the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So good.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. Four point one, correspondence, Dr. McLeod.
Good evening, the superintendent's office received the following correspondence regarding district business on these topics, measure M and projects and summer programs. Thank you.
Uh, four point two, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. One of all members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding non-agenda items must complete and submit their speaker slip at this time. There are some. There's four, I'll just go down in the order. First, we have Andrea Mann, second will be Cyrus, uh, Cleveland Burke.
Good evening, board, council, uh, cabinet. My name is Adrianne Lyon, I'm the mother of two children at Sycamore Ridge, I'm also psychiatrist in the community. And I'm here to represent Sycamore Ridge families from the surrounding community regarding the green space and playground access during the summer. It has come to our attention last night through an email that the district's compromise of allowing the baseball field next to the flip-leaf street back entrance would be the only space available to the community while the summer camp is in session. And we do not feel that this is a fair or equitable solution. As some background, Sycamore Ridge fields and playgrounds are the only green space and play space in walking distance to the homes in the surrounding community, including low-income Winwood Village apartments. The families in our area living in apartments and homes with small yards really depend on these grounds for fresh air and exercise and connection with the community in a safe environment. Only allowing access to this small field space does not feel a fair or equitable solution. As you know, from the demographics of our, our school at Sycamore Ridge compared to other schools, many families in our area cannot afford summer camps. So this park is a vital part of our healthy summer for many children and a key ingredient for supporting children and families' physical, mental health away from screens. And so parents of this community have had the same concerns, actually in the summer of twenty twenty, when the camp was hosted at Sycamore Ridge. And the district did respond by sectioning off the soccer field, Gaga Ball Court and Playground for the fifth and sixth grade classrooms. We are requesting the same solution, which we believe is equitable for our community this summer.
Oh, thank you. Next is Cyrus Burke. And after that will be Heather Burke.
Hello. My name is Cyrus Burke, a fifth grader at Sycamore Ridge Elementary. Thank you for being here this evening. I am here to discuss the matter that affects us all, the future of our school park during the upcoming summer. As we know, our school's after-school camp is set to run all day, nearly every day, and this has led to a decision by the district that closed the park for the entire community, even if it's just one small field. However, I stand before you today to advocate for a more comprehensive solution, one that takes into account the needs and desires of our wider community. Let me present several compelling reasons why we should reconsider current plans and strive for a more inclusive approach. Our park has always been a hub of activity, a place where families gather and children play. By limiting us to a single, small field, we've just speckled the very essence of the community spirit that makes our neighborhood special. A diverse range of activities from keepings to soccer hatches has enriched and enriched our lives. Let's preserve this mentality by ensuring access to various recreational spaces. Imagine the scene, kids chasing soccer rolls, families enjoying a picnic, and toddlers playing with toys, all within the confines of a tiny field. The risk of collision and accidents is high. We need ample space for different activities. Children should be able to play catch with up here between others and skateboarders. We'd like her to deserve designated areas where they can safely practice their skills. Physical activity is crucial for our well-being. By protecting only one small field, we limit opportunities for exercise and play. This prioritizes health by allowing the community amenities like basketball courts, a playground, or even a volleyball court. These options cater to different interests and age groups. Our community, our community is comprised of over three hundred households, each with unique preferences. Some love soccer, while others prefer basketball or football. A well-grounded park accommodates everyone, whether they are toddlers, teens, or seniors. Let's create a space where we all feel welcome. Expanding our park ensures that these interactions continue to thrive. Let's invest in our community. In conclusion, I urge our decision-makers to reconsider current plan. Let's think beyond the confines of a single field and envision a park that reflects on our community's diversity, safety, and well-being. Together, we can create a legacy, a space where memories are made, laughter echoes, and dreams take flight. Thank you for your time and permission.
Heather Burke, how about Burke will be Zishan, who's up?
Shorter than Hitler, I guess. Irish challenges. Hello, my name is Heather Burke, and not to waste any time, I did write everything so that I could get through this in three minutes. I am a Sycamore Ridge Elementary School parent, and I am here to speak on behalf of my neighborhood and this dying community who is being shut out of the only walking distance green space that we have for our community. This evening, my children and I are missing one of the school's most beloved events to be here because tonight we feel like this issue is vital. Since the district's decision was announced a day before the major school event, many parents are unable to be here. So please understand the lack of physical appearances is not reflective of how raw this issue is to our community. Last month, it was brought to the attention of the community that the decision was made to host the A S P camp at our school again for the second time in four years, thus closing the school grounds to the community for the majority of the summer. Our community consists of over three hundred and sixty-five homes and ninety-one unit apartment complexes that is within the immediate vicinity of our school, Sycamore Ridge. Many, many parents reached out to the principal, Mr. Lamaco, to help advocate for us to reach a compromise. Yesterday, we received a disheartening response that the compromise was to erect a fence and allow the entire community to use just one small field, which is less than half meter. With this option, this also restricts the community from being able to access the rest of the campus from the back entrance on days the camp is not sessioned. The compromise we were hoping and praying for, and that was expressed at P T A meetings, was the same compromise that was met in twenty twenty, the last time our school hosted the A S P camp, which was to have a barricade put in place from beyond the upper grade playground to the perimeter fence with access only through one front side gate. And as, just for image purpose, please. This compromise will allow a large community use of not only a field, but also a play structure, basketball courts, horseback courts, volleyball, and a blocktop space to provide a safe place for bike riding, skateboarding, riding scooters, and roller skating, all of which I see on a daily basis on our daily visits to campus after school. With this solution, the A S P camp will still have the majority of the campus with the A S P building, two fields, two play structures, volleyball, basketball, horseback courts, ample blocktop space, restrooms, and a shaded eating area available to them. During the summer months, while many parents are working, unable to afford a summer food camp, it's inspired. I'm sorry, but your time is up. Can I pass the microphone for the reading? I think so, I can do it. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll have a staff hall over. Thank you so much. Next one is Zishan, who's up?
Thank you so much. I made a comment with this very room back in November, and I asked by the superintendent, this is Dr. McLeod, I've sent an email to address the root of this very campaign of destruction, carried over ten companies in the back then, including four thousand children, as she had with Israel's level, over a thousand deaths after the brutal Hamas attack. Sixteen, another twenty-five thousand civilians have died, then the forty-five thousand. And that includes fourteen thousand children, fourteen thousand children, fourteen thousand children. That is the total involvement in T N D S T types three, and still have a few thousand left over. All nine schools, three times over and still have room to kill a few thousand more. I do not make this comment casually, my own son goes to school here. Back in November, I made the case that Dr. McLeod must empathize with one community as much as with another. The board had the opportunity to acknowledge this wrong and refer the matter to district staff to at least make that such a hill which I can only call apathy or antipathy and not have it repeated in the future. We do make a bitch of D E I, but at the end of the day, it's all a horse and pony show, and I would know because I've served on the committee for one year. But today, I want to make a case against not the superintendent, but the anti-declaration league, the A D L, and letting it into our schools as the arbiter of what is hate and what is not. This inherently gives it the power to define what is moral and what is not. A lot of things can be hateful, and one that stands out in A D L's context is antisemitism, which is because they are Jewish. But the A D L is putting its weight behind the definition of antisemitism, and by extension, the definition of hate that is politically and ideologically being used to chill free speech on campuses, and that anyone who criticizes this religion Zionism and frankly puts American rights in danger. The C E O recently said, and I thought, you wouldn't, you shouldn't, you wouldn't tolerate someone wearing a swastika on their arm. I'm sorry, you shouldn't tolerate it if they wear a kufira on their neck and coat. This is after we tied in November on three college students in Vermont while live feeling stranger. Two of them were wearing kufiras. One of them has been paralyzed by loches. A D L is throwing the seeds of hate that it is supposed to stand against and fight. There's a clear conflict of interest based on A D L's publicly stated stance in putting hate first. On to the end part, I request the board to refer the matter to district staff to replace A D L's, no place for hate programs with an organization that is representative of diverse voices that of this strength deserves, thank you.
Thank you. We are at five, five one one board recognition, D M S the employees of the month, April twenty twenty four, unanimously. And six, consent agenda, consent agenda, six point one to six sixteen, consent items. Are there any questions or any few things that we would like to pull up?
Yeah, I'd like to pull up six point five.
Okay.
Six point one, three. Six point one, four.
Okay. Any? Then I'll, if there's no other questions, I'll ask for a motion for everything excluding, to approve everything excluding.
Sorry, six point eight.
Six point eight, okay. So, everything excluding six five, six eight, six thirteen, six fourteen, is there a motion to approve those items?
So?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion approved, the, those items passes unanimously, and then we'll go to six five. You have questions or if you have one question? Okay.
Other than asking for the fees to be listed.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve item six five?
So?
Second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion approved, six five passes four to one. Six eight, questions or just both?
No, just wondering, some more context to this one, access control system, can you guys, get some reference to this?
This is the front-end security systems. So this is a notice of completion, saying we completed the work, which it starts the timeline, if there were any complaint by a contractor or subcontractor, they could file it to thirty days by noticing that it's complete. We're both saying it's complete, which helps us with that process, sorry, excuse me. And, and then we put it with the file and it starts to close it out.
So every site now is the word?
Every site has the system installed, correct?
Okay. Let's get to that, thank you.
Motion approved, six eight.
So?
Sorry, second? All those in? Aye. Motion for six eight passes unanimously, six thirteen.
So I'm wondering, this is attendance at a conference for A S P, which is our, I think which is our after-school care. Does this also include like the summer program that's being hosted at Sycamore Ridge?
So this, this conference includes our director of after-school programs, which also oversees our summer camp.
Yeah, okay. So the funds for this are coming out of that enterprise fund, which, the enterprise fund consists of monies that are, you know, students, families are paying tuition for them to attend A S P or the summer camp?
So it comes from the, yes, from the funds that are related to, not just the summer camp, but all of our after-school program and E C B C program.
And I'm just wondering, because I know there was a time a few years ago during COVID when we had to kind of cut that program, and so now, could you speak on the tuition? Is it something that we feel like is a rate where we're getting a lot of extra funds in that fund, more than we maybe need?
I couldn't speak to the fund balance right now. I can tell you that we have been able to move the program so that rather than operating at a deficit, it has moved to being into a slight positive. We review the fees every year for the after-school program, and then in concert, there's the expanded learning opportunity program that provides some funding. And so we, we look at those together and looking at the funding of the program. But I don't have numbers for you, we can bring back numbers, I don't have those numbers right in front of me for what are exact fees or what is the fund balance for that.
Are families who are paying tuition for the after-school program, traditionally families who are going to enroll in the summer camp, I think that registration has come out, are they privy to this attendance at this conference and the cost, or is this just their opportunity to be aware of that? Or has, has anything been shared with families, like, we're going to be attending this conference, and this is why, and here's what we hope to gain by attending that conference?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Sort of a related question, hopefully that can be answered along with this. There was mention this evening of inability to access summer camps for some families that reside within the district. Could you speak on that related to the other funds that we just mentioned?
So the students who are eligible through the yellow P program have access to the summer camp, and so would be able to attend the summer camp for free. So that would be just like the after-school program during the day, they still have access to the summer camp for, over the course of the summer, because there is an opportunity for eligible students to attend the camp for free.
Is that something that the district proactively shares, that information with those identified families, to let them know that they have that opportunity to register?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
Is there a motion approved, six thirteen?
So?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Just can, wait, can you just clarify, you don't think, why are not, we're being asked those questions? No.
All right, motion passes four to one. Six fourteen. Is there any questions?
Yes. Okay, so this is a collaboration, a consulting firm, I think it was mentioned, there's some excitement about A I, it's going to be discussed. Can you guys talk to us about what the agenda looks like for this, what are the topics to be covered, because I see that the Kami Office of Ed offers a similar opportunity in August for educators to attend, half the cost, lots of different topics covered, design thinking, robotics, A I. So I'm just wondering why we're paying thirty thousand dollars for this one?
Sure, I'll share a bit about the objectives. So the objective of consulting with somebody is, when we think about professional learning, we think about who are the right people to get in the room. And so it's important and imperative that educators have a handle on not only the use of A I, but a safe way to use A I as an adult in my profession, and then also guidance around student use. And so as part of our strategic plan, we have an action item around tech experts. And so we are going to be gathering a group of staff that will be helping, will be learning within a cohort model, and then bringing back that information to school sites, as well as helping, helping us to lead in looking at our policies around A I and developing those within our school district.
Have you attended any other A I trainings with Kami?
Well, we have attended many A I trainings over time in a variety of formats, many people in our department, including our technology department and instructional services. We feel that working with Christian Jackson is a great next step for us, because he's going to be able to work in partnership, in person, with our staff.
So I, I work in my school, I see how A I affects high school students, I'm just not understanding yet how this work is necessary for our elementary school level.
So our staff, we've already had some learning with staff at school sites, where our staff was able to provide some input to us around what are some of the things that they are interested in knowing, how are they already using it, because many staff members already follow. And so we want to make sure that any A I platforms that we're using, one, we're using in a smart way, that aligns with student privacy and the correct regulations around student use, so that's really important to us, so we need to really get ahead of that, because our staff are, they're always looking at what are the best ways we can use technology? How can I use it to personalize learning experiences for students? How can I use it to engage students, give them more feedback than they get with just one teacher in the room? And so it's important, they have a strong desire to learn more about it, how it can help free up some of their time so that they can spend more time with students. And that's been feedback from our staff.
Okay.
I just want to say that A I is just a really incredibly powerful tool. I mean, my third grader, or my fourth grader now, last year was a third grader, was already using the program regularly. I use it, I use since the day I am. So knowing how to use it, knowing how to incorporate it into their daily lives, as was mentioned already, kind of happened to some of the teachers, I think it's incredibly important to know how to use it properly and responsibly, and particularly for sustainable trainers, teachers, and students, to be able to how, the most up-to-date appropriate ways to use it, it's very important.
Because I agree with that, you are, and I thank you for being proactive and going to get the initial training and surveying of the resources and how, or issues, and that, and that learning how it's being used. And I, I know it affects and ready to kid and will more and more over time, so this is probably the tip of the iceberg, as far as establishing how A I is integrated into our teaching, so I just appreciate the creativity and me thinking through how to engage teachers and using this perfectly.
Will anyone be attending the training that Kami's offering in August?
So as I mentioned, we, we have participated in a variety of trainings, and we will continue to do so, so that we can, as it's ever changing, it changes rapidly, and we can stay on top of things and make sure that we have the right information so we can make informed decisions.
So in preparation for this agenda item, I had asked some questions about how we selected this organization and what they're doing together and together, and then you can share with everyone that process.
Sure, so when we looked to determine what would be the right next step, Christian Jackson came into the picture, because he has done work with many school districts throughout California, and it's highly regarded with working with staff, working with those administrators, in order to help inform them around practice, policy, and, you know, safe use of A I. And so that's why, based on feedback from other people, based on looking into and working with some, talking to some of the school districts he's currently working with, we felt that was a good choice.
Is he currently working with elementary school districts?
He is.
So like, what, can you give us some kind of like indicator of what, what's a lesson topic that he's going to be covering?
Sure. So some of the things that he's going to do is assist teachers in gaining proficiency with A I tools to support their proficiency and better student outcomes, that's one objective. He's going to He's going to help our teachers and our staff understand what are safe uses of AI, what are safe ways to use AI, and what are not. Thinking about our instructional program and how we can make sure that we're using AI in a way that also bolsters what we want to see educationally. So what I mean by that is helping students think critically, be problem solvers, be proactive and agents of their learning, and also be able to determine what's false information and what's real information.
Yeah, I just, personally, I, I like to see creative thinking and unique ideas, and I don't know, AI is a little head scratching to me when it comes to, it's, you know, where's the individual in AI?
And I understand that, and that's why it's important to help provide guidance to our staff, so that we can be clear about our objectives, about safe use of, and make sure that there's a comfort level for teachers, and that they have some guidance.
Is there motion approved six fourteen?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Hold us in favor? Aye. Hold us opposed?
I'm gonna say no right now.
Motion passes four to one. And we are at eight point one, quarter four, destination twenty twenty eight, we're going to attend two twenty twenty four to twenty five, so we're cleared and now.
So tell me more about the workshop, Strategic Design Workshop, in, is it May twenty eighth?
Twenty first.
Twenty first.
Yes.
Who will be attending? Who will be encouraged to attend? What do we hope to accomplish?
So we will be sending out an email invitation, we're planning on tomorrow, to all of our community, and obviously, we would like to advertise it on the website and mix by the word, because anyone who's interested in attending is really encouraged to be there, and it's one way to be in attendance, to have a voice, and also to listen to the other voices of people in the community. So it's all of our parents and anyone else in the community, you know, that who we serve that we would really encourage to attend.
Thank you for your presentation. A couple of questions I have. You have mentioned focus groups with staff and that you adapt to their schedules so that they can attend. I'm just wondering how you adapt to parents' schedules. I think still offering virtual options for parents and families is important. I just putting that out there. I would love to attend a principal coffee or whatever coffee, but I can't. Or it's very hard for me to do that. So I also wanted to know, I know that El Cap Community Survey closes on Friday, so that's due up for tomorrow. Are we going to have another push to make sure families are participating? And also, how can a larger community who don't have students in the district know and participate in that survey? Does it have to be Friday that we close it? Because I haven't seen anything like the Delmar Times or anything about that survey. Maybe I missed it, and also never even heard.
So the survey's on our school website, so that does make it available to any member of the community to go on and take the survey through our school website. And we do look at timelines, because the information does inform. So when we decide how long we have a survey open, it's because we want the information so we can help inform our strategic planning.
I understand. Can you tell me who is involved? What stakeholders do you have in the World Language Advisory Committee?
Yes, so we have stakeholders from our Ashley Falls School, from Delmar Hills School. We have staff members that attend that, and then district site staff that attend that.
Okay, and are those minutes shared with anyone?
So following those meetings, there is a recap of those meetings and what was discussed at those meetings that are shared with every family in this program.
Okay, thank you. So when you talked about STEAM looking ahead, I just, I see, I kind of see like middle school, high school, like, in a good way, but that elementary, and I, all I know, I'm sure I'm gonna say more, but I'm just missing like English language arts or Spanish language arts and then math in this. But like the idea of having kids go to all these different rotations, I know my guys love, they're, all the STEAM stuff that they do, they, you know, they love it all. So yeah, I don't, I don't have, it's not necessarily a question, I'm just kind of thinking out loud that I, obviously, this isn't evolving, education's always evolving. I just, it's exciting to see that we're able to incorporate art, science, music, PE, innovation, technology. And then I see like, just those, yeah, just, obviously, the classroom teacher that they're with for the bulk of the time is also giving a lot of instruction and just, you know, we're always looking for funding for STEAM, and so it's like trying to find that balance of funding STEAM and then adding all these things that everybody wants. And we've talked about that for years. So I guess, I don't know where it will go years from now, but, you know, maybe having the actual classroom teacher have like an art credential too, I don't know, that's messy, but, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not sure exactly where I'm going with this, but, thanks.
So Catherine made me think of a question for when we get the results from the survey. I'd be curious to know the number of respondents we'll have and how that compares to, say, the last few years. I think it would be a good question to see, you know, are we reaching out and getting the, we can see what that looks like over the years. So I know we don't have the answer now, but when we do get the report out, it'd be nice to know all about the past.
One to, for approval of contract for services for Learner Center Collaborative.
So we're bringing a Learner Center Collaborative contract, and this would be to facilitate our work with, facilitating work with community, working on not only the two meetings that we have scheduled, but then also the analysis and looking at the information, making sure that we're challenging the right information, and using that in a manner that allows us to not only gather information on this year's work through Destination 2028, but also to formulate some of the next steps and then look at how we're moving forward with our September meeting.
So the two meetings you mentioned are the one that we're about to have on the twenty first?
Correct.
Okay.
So May twenty first, there will be work with Learner Center Collaborative to facilitate that meeting, to support our work in that meeting. Then we will be gathering further input based on that meeting as we move between May and September, and then we will be working with Learner Center Collaborative to do a fall meeting in September as we look at priority actions, the next steps we are taking with our Destination 2028, moving into our twenty four, twenty five schedule.
I'm wondering what happened to Dr. Alan Daly?
So that would be two separate skill sets and components of the work that we're doing. Alan Daly and the contract with Alan Daly was specific to the Better Together Survey, not to the actual work with facilitating and working through the meetings. So this would be more analogous to work we did with the Telfer Kids last year, as we set the stage for the first, the beginning of Destination 2028. And now we're really looking at how do we make sure that we have a facilitated process to make sure that as we bring in as many inputs we can into the fold, we can facilitate a good smooth process to be able to engage them in an appropriate manner, gather inputs, and that would be a productive meeting, both on May twenty first, and then the input gathering process, and then our September meeting that we'll be looking as well.
And I'm assuming the contract with the Telfer Kids is over? And I was looking to.
Correct, it was a one-year contract.
It was limited to the what was hap, what happened last year.
And the contract with Dr. Alan Daly is over as well? And that he's going to come back and share information and?
Actually, your timing is perfect on this, Catherine. We actually received an email, so the contract with Dr. Daly is ongoing. We received an email from Dr. Daly today saying, actually congratulating us on a very high response rate from all of our, or all of our surveys, and he now is reaching out to us to be able to set up an opportunity to go over some of the preliminary data as he's going to get them. So, and as Chris said, Dr. Daly is going to be in the process of gathering and synthesizing the information from the surveys that we put out to our stakeholders, whereas this other group is going to be once facilitating the strategic planning process.
Just to clarify, I mean, this is, like you're saying, it's analogous to the Telfer Kids, so it's facilitated, it's coming to the strategic planning meetings, so there's several meetings that you guys mentioned, there's going to be a person that comes there, facilitates a meeting, gathers information at that meeting, and then Alan Daly is a separate issue where he was collecting survey information from staff, parents and such, in cooperation with the strategic planning.
Exactly.
That's correct. And the direction of the board last year and the commitment to allowing for involvement, including the involvement of us to actually be participants in the process rather than leading and facilitating the process, really is made, is made, is actualized through facilitation of a wonderful group such as Learner Center Collaborative, and last year it was the Telfer Kids. Last year it was, you know, the contract was a very extensive contract, I believe it was seventy five thousand dollars, because it was an entire very comprehensive, extensive process, which led us through multiple meetings. Now we're down to, you know, making sure that we still have a process that's facilitated that allows for maximum involvement of all of our partners, and gets us to the next stage of developing a priori actions for the next year and beyond as well.
I know that they work with Encinitas, have we had a discussion with them about their?
We did.
And what, I'm assuming they said they were there?
Yes. Yes, they also work with many school districts actually throughout the entire state, and Encinitas being one of them, they have helped Encinitas really develop their partner of learner, their strategic planning process, and also looking at, we're finalizing the report card, their assessment system, all of that, so their work with Center Collaborative has been quite extensive.
Is there a motion approved for the contract for services with Learning Center?
I'm going to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hold us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hold us opposed?
No.
Motion to approve the contract passes four to one. Nine point one, quarter four, facilities update, this is Valentin.
Good evening, board. This evening we'll do our facilities updates, and we have two projects to update on, the Delmar Hills Academy organization, the Delmar Hills School rebuild. Delmar Hills Academy, we are at the point where we have DSA group plans, so exciting news over the last month. We have gotten DSA approval, that, we also have a guaranteed maximum price, construction price that will be ten point one, we'll bring to the board. And in addition, we have a notice of exemption, we updated the CECL documents based on the, when we originally went through it, we went through it just on the plan and the actual, the project itself, and then we are bringing a new notice of exemption, because we did a study of the potential impact for traffic and with having students beyond campus, and I'll speak to that as we get to this nine point two. In addition, at this point, as we're moving closer to the modernization, students moving off campus, we are finalizing busing surveys, much as we've done with Delmar Heights in the past, we're sending that out to our Delmar Hills families likely next week. We've been working with Boys and Girls Club, looking at both the access for the Boys and Girls Club, and as we're doing some busing and bringing students over to this side of the freeway, we typically have a number of students who use Boys and Girls Club for after-school care, and we like to have the space to sort everybody in that after-school program, so working collaboratively to make sure that there is transportation to get students from Delmar Heights to the after-school program, the Boys and Girls Club at Delmar Hills, we'll work with San Marcos Unified to work through that process. So that busing survey will help us as well with the stops, much as it has done in the past with Delmar Heights. So that's going out, again, Boys and Girls Club, we continue to work collaboratively with to make sure that we can find right amount of space, but also be able to complete the project at the same time. Moving on to our Delmar Heights School rebuild, we, as you know, have been working steadily since March sixth, twenty twenty three, it's basically the middle of our year actually since we restarted, and so we are still anticipating completion, full completion at the end of June, enough completion to be able to have a motion on site in May. We have over a hundred and thirty workers on site daily, and the interesting thing with construction is, you know, you kind of ramp up to this number, and then it really just kind of, you're pushed through, and so it isn't really a bell curve curve, it's sort of, not quite an ellipse, but it kind of, it comes up and really pushes right to the end. So we're really at eighty percent completion, there's a lot of work still going on across the building. And so Building A, which is the admin building, has some casework being installed, it also has kindergarten classrooms. Building C, which is the classroom building, we've really been building from the south up. Carpet's being installed starting next week. We have casework, we have some whiteboards in, it's really coming together, and there's been a lot of the glass and glazing coming in, so starting to really look like the campus, although there's still a lot of work still to do in that area. Building M, we have data cabling and then glazing or glasswork that's coming in, so you'll see in the pictures in the next slide, and you can really see what the space looks like from the outside. And then really, we've started grading in the field and irrigation, we're at the point where some of the bioswales are actually being planted. We're working on, making sure that we've got systems tied in that bioswale going in, and as it becomes established, will really help with the whole stormwater system being fully completed. As the field goes in, and the field is laid, and the turf goes in, also will absorb water. As we've had some rains recently, the rain actually has not spilled off the gopher holes and other things, because it's become into these systems that are there. And we actually had a chance to walk the site with California State Parks just last week. We continue to collaborate closely with them and looking at the project and talking about how we can continue to not only follow the stormwater prevention plans and the best management practices, but also next steps as we finish the project and starting to partner with State Parks with our students as well as move on in the project and move on to teaching and learning in the school, which is fantastic. So exciting, this is on the top, that's our in-building, the M U R Innovation Center on the backside, the glass is going in. Anybody who's been there up until really a couple of weeks ago, that was all plastic that was just there to kind of keep some of the wind tunnel from blowing and just kind of blowing through, and so it's really exciting to see that come together. As you look at the bottom left, that is one of the common learning spaces with couches towards the campus, and so that area will be alive with learning. The area on the left that you can see that still has the plastic will be the bi-fold door, so that will open up wholly and be able to connect the indoors to the outdoors. And then on your bottom left, you can see, if you look closely, you can see behind those big steel bars is the playground going in, the kindergarten area. And then that, what you see in the foreground is actually, we've got a wall, and that was just kind of a regular wall as we went into the construction process, one of the changes we did is making sure that it had some overhang. So when we do have rain, you have a way to get through the campus and not get wet as you're going between buildings, backpacks going in, so this will be a nice way, and it also nicely, once it's completed, secures that kindergarten area from the driveway and apartment area. So it's coming together, that was getting poured, and then that will be sort of walled off to, to continue that kindergarten space from the playground, ah, I see, from the apartment on site. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. So can Dance Fest be held at Delmar?
We're still looking at Dance Fest, and I, we're, I didn't promise it yet because of the space we will need, and we, I'm hopeful we'll be able to do something like that with the promotion. I can tell you we will have promotion there, and I'm hoping we'll do something else there.
Great, thanks about promotion, and thanks for continuing to see if there's anybody doing Dance Fest outside, especially when they know so many seniors coming back to celebrate celebratory, really for a lot of people. Oh, yes, and so as far as the ribbon cutting and all that, I think you're aiming for September or August, but what are your thoughts about?
But what are your thoughts about community tours of the facility prior to kids going on during campus? Is that something we could offer for neighbors and others who are just interested in connecting to that school site, do I part of it?
Yeah, I think ideally we find a way to do something, whether it's ribbon cutting or some other community event that happens before school starts. Because as we've been talking a little bit, again, this isn't fully fleshed out, but as we think about it, we want to have the opportunity for our former students to feel the same. So if we have it on a Wednesday in our school and other schools say that, obviously that's a problem. Either they're skipping school or having to come down, or they're not, so we're looking at how can we do that in a way that is inclusive amongst those students who weren't able to come on the campus, but obviously they'd like to see it be a part of.
Right, and I'm thinking that's great of the students, and but I'm even thinking about the community or neighbors or folks, like if we can have, you know, kind of a early evening, late afternoon sorts of tours where people could be, kind of access to the site or even something on the weekend where it's kind of like an open house. I know there are those staffing coverage type issues to think about, but just having it outside of traditional work hours or more than once so that people have a chance. Because it just, this is a real, as with Pacific Sky at all our schools, but this is a really important community amenity, and we want to be welcoming to folks to come to the campus.
Absolutely.
I think you're staying there for 9.2 to board review and approval, Resolution Number 202404. It's a resolution authorizing a categorical exemption for purposes satisfied by the California Environmental Quality Act CECL for the Delmar Hills Academy Modernization Project, approving the project, and delegate authority to staff to execute and file the notice of exemption.
So we are bringing this, this is, as I shared in the facilities update, and updates to our notice of exemptions that's in a study of potential traffic impacts based on having students at Delmar Heights. And it had said, we'll stay in here, stay in for Ashley Falls, because when we started this, we were still talking about two potential locations. We know that we will have students going to Ashley Falls, but as it was studied, it's both, we're bringing it with the full study that was done. So we would request board approval of the resolution, and this will prove the project as described. And then, and as we have shared with the board, and it's now DSA approved, and will approve the CECL documents, which then allows us to move forward in the next steps to move into approving the construction contract and starting construction.
Just curious, was there any findings to share about the study that you mentioned?
Being that it's a notice of exemption, it means that we are either exempt or we don't, the, the. The traffic study does not rise to a level that has an impact. So if we rose to a level where we had an impact that we had to mitigate, then we'd be moving into the mitigated negative declaration. And we'd be looking at how do we mitigate it to bring it running below. At this point, it either has no impact or is exempt, and so there are a number of things where we have exemptions. For example, when we are looking at the building, because we are built, modernizing in place, we're not adding square footage, we're not adding a part, we're not adding the capacity to it. So there are a number of exemptions that are listed in there as well that we exempted from CECL.
Just a question, if you, because I know you don't have the total enrollment numbers quite as yet, and maybe not until July, or. Does this allow for a change? If you are able to accommodate more students at the fourth grade onto Delmar Heights? Is this kind of maybe not?
We have the flexibility. I will say, looking at the enrollment right now, I think it is virtually impossible that there are going to be any indifference layout in K3 and 46. But that would have reduced the number of, the amount of traffic going outside of the areas, so that would have been, that would not have impacted, that would not have impacted in a manner that would change this.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution Number 202404? So. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of us opposed? One motion passed, third motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris, and I think you're still there. Order 21, Resolution Number 202405. Resolution of the Governing Board of Trustees of the Delmar Union School District to approve a final guaranteed maximum price for the Delmar Hills Academy Modernization Project.
So we're bringing this guaranteed, a final guaranteed maximum price, but I can't see the number on, I'm just going to there, but I have it on here. For the Delmar Hills Academy Modernization. And as you can see in the right, I think it was the final guaranteed maximum price of a little under $22 million. The GMP, I will say, comes in and when combined with our estimates for our other costs that we said we were budgeting in $25.5 million, it is a little bit over, and so we're probably around $500,000 over. We are looking at some value engineering options, so there's some things that we can do that will not impact the overall project, like is it the type of roofing without, by still doing metal ceiling? So we have a couple of things that we're going to look at, this is a common practice, we're looking at construction projects, there are ways where we can shave off a little bit of money here, a little bit of money there. There are contingencies involved as well too, so we'll be looking at how we can hold on to that, maybe come back a little bit under. But I will say right now, this has us a little bit over the budget. I also will say, I've had some conversations with neighboring districts and other folks. We've seen a fair number of bids coming in over what was cost estimated right now, so I will. For where we're cost estimated at and where we came in, I think we are in a pretty good spot. But I, full disclosure, we are a little bit over with our, the total costs when we look at others. And we're working closer with Harrison Hall, flying August, and Carlos Alves and myself to see where can we hopefully make some minor reductions without changing the totality of the project itself. But with that, I would recommend approval, I think that we have a cost that is going to, absence the, you know, going back to the front where to make bigger changes. I think we need to look at these smaller things that we can do to make cuts that are close to that total cost. Good question.
Sounds good to me. I mean, it reminds me of, like, there are certain times I think with this guy that I was able to kind of get some money back. So I think it's, hopefully, that's that's in the future.
Harrison Hall is my great partner with that, and they are, so we will, yeah, we'll work on that, I mean, you actually had a session today, so we're already working on it.
It's always been the walking progress.
Yeah.
So is there a motion to approve Resolution 202405?
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All of us opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Chris, and oh, he's still there. 10.2, order review, file, and then Citizens Oversight Committee 2022, 2023 Annual Report.
So the ones or deliverable the COC has on an annual basis is an annual report. And so our Citizens Oversight Committee meets about quarterly. We have a fantastic group, we, they, we go over our financial reports with them, we go over our project updates, and we typically meet at a school sites and go over what a project looks like. The Citizens Oversight Committee at the March meeting each year comes with, they create, well, we work with them to create an annual report. They review the annual report, they review the bond audits, so they, you've already seen the bond audit, which is attached to this, but that bond audit is part of the annual report. And so combining their reports saying that, if you look at it, it talks about that, going through that they've been able to attend the meetings, and Garwaj Set is up to date. And we are, in essence, following the rules that are set forth with a G O bond. And in this report, COC is saying that we are following those steps and is is providing the report to the board. This does not require action, it's a receipt and file, but it is an annual report that is provided from Citizens Oversight Committee to the board. And I will say that it's been a great group, and we appreciate the hard work that they do and the time and commitment that they give us to be a part of the Citizens Oversight.
Thank you for the work that they do, and thank you for this other point we've received. We're being humped, we're actually. It's 11.1, public hearing, approval of the initial proposal for contract negotiations from the M E S D to the Delmar and Delmar Teachers Association, 2024, 2025.
So good evening, President Mock, members of the board, and Dr. McQuarrie. So currently, we have a three-year agreement with the Delmar California Teachers Association and with the Delmar Union School District that expires on June 30th, 2025. So under the Government Code 3547, the presentation and adoption of the district's proposal for contract negotiations is a two-step process. So last board meeting on March 13th, the district's initial proposal was presented for initial viewing for the public. So this evening, the initial proposal for contract negotiations is presented to open a public hearing for comment and for final approval and adoption. So approval of the district's initial proposal will allow the parties to begin negotiations for the 2024, 2025 school year.
Okay, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing, a hearing, public comment. Hearing opened at, let me see, 7:40 PM by me. And we take off comments, is there any comments? There's no comments, so then we can close the public hearing at 7:40 by me. So, what's that? Oh, I bet. That's true, it's 7:41, I'm sorry, my. So is there a motion to approve the initial proposal for contract negotiation, P S D, to Delmar and Delmar Teachers Association? Would approve, is there a second?
Aye.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, in order to 11.2, initial proposal for contract negotiations from Delmar and Delmar Teachers Association to the Delmar Union School District.
So the exclusive representative for our certificated employees for the purpose of collective bargaining is the Delmar California Teachers Association, otherwise known as DMCTA. So DMCTA has presented its initial proposal for contract negotiations to the district for staff and for the public to review. So the board is asked this evening to accept and acknowledge receipt of the DMCTA proposal for negotiations as it will allow the parties to begin negotiations for the 2024 or 2025 school year.
Is there a motion to approve receipt of the initial proposal?
I'm ready to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion to approve receipt passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we are at closing items. 12.1, order review reminder of the M E S D events. 12.2, order review reminder of the M E S D events. 3, order review preliminary items for the 12.24, ready to board meeting. And we are at 12.4, adjourned meeting, is there a motion to adjourn meeting? So move, is there a second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion to adjourn meeting passes, and we're adjourned at 7:40 PM, thank you very much.